We're ready. We're ready. I call to order the special meeting of the Finance Committee to consider the budget for next year. We have present all committee members, three in person, and Ms. Adams is out of town but is joining us technology-wise. And we, Ms. Adams, we can see you. I hope you could see us and hear us. With that, we do have an agenda. Let me call it up, please, and we will go down that. We will begin with review of the questions from the Mayor and City Council. Mr. Tesh, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Chairman Clark, Mayor Johns, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, and members of the committee and council. So the first item on the agenda includes review of responses. I am going to ask Ms. Courtney Driver from our Utilities Department to come up there. We have a couple of questions about Utilities' capital plan, specifically the Lagoon project, as well as some things related to regulatory updates. So she's got a couple of slides she's going to share on those.
All right, good afternoon, members of the council. As Scott mentioned, yes, there were some questions at last week's meetings that hopefully I will be able to address for you this afternoon. Okay. Okay, next slide.
They're not on our screen.
A little bit of a lag.
A little bit of a lag. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, so on your screen should be the overall solid waste capital improvement program. So this year, this upcoming budget year, we are requesting 910,000 in budget appropriations for three projects in the solid waste division. Okay, next slide. And on the water and wastewater capital improvement program, we are requesting in budget appropriation $69.5 million to fund 17 capital projects, one of which is the Elitch Lagoon project, which is $40 million of that total. So I'll get into the specifics on that in the next slide. Okay? The Archeology wastewater treatment plant has three bio-solids lagoon. Two of those lagoons were built in the 1950s, and one was built in the 60s. In 2021, we noticed or found out that one of the lagoons was leaking. We immediately took it out of service and contained the leak. We've also been communicating with the North Carolina Division of Water Resources since that time on the next steps that we need to take and how to remedy the situation. We hired a consultant to help us with an engineering report, and that report has been completed. And the most significant piece of this project is to reconstruct the lagoon that's leaking and build it to current standards, to today's standards. We will also be decommissioning two of the other two lagoons, and we are also considering some additional nutrient management treatment as part of this project that's really dependent upon the nutrient management plan that's being developed by the state right now. And I have a slide in, in two slides from now, I'll get into a little bit of the specifics on that. So the proposed PFOS regulations, this is on the drinking water side. The final rule is anticipated to be out in late 2023 with a compliance date three years later. Our utility anticipates being in compliance with the proposed levels that will be set for six PFOS compounds.
Those are the forever...
Yes, the forever, what you...
What do they call them, forever?
Forever chemicals, yes.
Forever chemicals. Wilmington area is having a real problem because they got a chemical plant that makes them down there.
Yes, they're having a tough situation. But under our current, based on the monitoring and the data that we've had, we have today and our source water as it is right now, we anticipate being in compliance with those levels. So it looks like they're looking to set the maximum contaminant level of four parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS, and setting the health hazard index of one for the other four compounds. The rule will also set quarterly monitoring requirements for utilities, and it'll also establish a public notification requirements that utilities have to follow if they exceed the levels.
Go ahead.
We were asked specifically about that in our last trip up to Washington. People were very concerned about municipalities having enough coverage or enough money set aside to be able to meet these because there'll be, if you've got to retool for it, it's very, very expensive.
Yes. And so there's, a lot of our peer utilities have concerns, and we do as well. But what it looks like under our current conditions right now, we will, we will be able to meet those levels.
Question, can you measure one triath? Is the equipment that good?
So there has been a lot of conversation, that's a good question, about whether our current instruments can detect at the levels that they were setting. And at the very beginning, they were setting them so low that our, our instruments couldn't even detect that, that low. But I believe at the levels that they're setting at now, we can.
And how would you get it out if you had it?
So it's a different, it's a treatment process, and we would have to make changes to, to our, to our treatment process. I'm not going to pretend like I'm the expert, but I, we do have a deputy director who is an expert, and he can come and give you all the technical information that you want of how we would remove it from the water if we needed to.
Okay. Continue.
Okay, and so then the last slide is to discuss nutrient management plan updates. This is on the wastewater side. So High Rock Lake is considered impaired waters. The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality is currently drafting regulations to address the increased nutrients, specifically phosphorus and nitrogen in the Yakkin River watershed. There's been steering committees that have been selected with members representing various interest groups. There's also technical advisory groups that have been formed to represent various interests. Members of those groups are from point source dischargers and non-point source dischargers. Winston-Salem has representation on both the point source and the stormwater technical advisory groups. And NCDEQ plans to have a draft rule for review by late this year or early into next year with hopefully a final rule in 2025. This will impact our wastewater permits. It'll also impact the development community based on the stormwater requirements that are part of the final rule. The impact as of now, we do not know because the limits have not been set yet, but I can tell you, we are, we do have a voice at the table. We are a part of those groups so that our voice is being heard. And what I have heard so far or seen in some of the draft proposals is that they're going to start with phosphorus removal and give us a compliance, so many years to comply with that, and then jump to, or move into the nitrogen, setting nitrogen limits.
Isn't one of the major sources of phosphorus runoff from farmlands? Because that's what's in fertilizer, as we well know.
Yes, and nitrogen, yes.
Yeah. Are they gonna, are the farmers going to have to do something, or are we going to bear the burden of all?
So I think, so when I refer to non-point source discharger, that is kind of the ag community, and it is harder, well, I'll say this, it's easier to regulate a point source discharger such as a wastewater treatment plant because we have a permit.
Certainly.
So it's easier to, to kind of enforce us or regulate us. But we are trying to build a relationship with the ag community to see how we can partner to, to meet the needs of what we need to do.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Oh, excuse me, Ms. Cipio.
Yes, I just had a point of clarity. For the $40 million project, we're going to rebuild one lagoon but decommission the other two?
Correct.
Does that rebuild of the one replaces all three?
Correct. So it will be bigger, it'll be built to today's standards, and so we'll be able to handle what the three did prior, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just mention, we have most, most of the council here tonight. I'm in the process of setting up a tour. We're going to try to do it in August, I'm going to wait till it's really, really hot to go to the sewer plants.
And it smells wonderful.
Yeah, but I'm going to invite everyone up here, including the mayor and everybody else, to tour. We think we sat on the Swan, which is the fairly new water treatment plant, the Elitch sewer treatment, wastewater treatment, and then down to Idles Dam, which is, has a lot of construction going on right now, but it has some unique characteristics down there as well. And so stay tuned. As everyone knows, we do not meet in July, but I will try to hit this in July, or, I mean, July or August or September, sometime like that.
We would, we would absolutely love to have all of you.
It's coming. Yes, ma'am.
One more question. Is the water treatment, this wastewater treatment project, the $40 million one, is that a one-year project? It's going to all be done in one year?
No, it'll be multiple years. It'll need to go through a design phase and then construction phase, but it will take multiple years.
But we're budgeting, Nick, this coming year, the 40 million?
Yes, so we have to have the budget appropriations upfront to be able to issue POs, and then we will spend it over several years.
Thank you.
We'll finance it in one year, Ms. Latham, right, and spend it over three or four. Thank you, Ms. Driver. We will now go to the next item.
We will technically still be on the same...
Oh, yes, we're on item one still.
Councilmember Clark, so the rest of that item is the remainder of the response packet, which is included in your agenda system, roughly 22 pages in length. I'm not going to go through each one of the responses one by one, but I will touch on just a few where more than one council member asked a question at a very high level. So there were a couple of questions about the American Rescue Plan Act framework. It is loaded in there. Generally, what we have said is that entire framework has been allocated to something. So as individuals or other agencies say, hey, I'd like some ARPA money, the note there is that the city council has appropriated all of that funding for a purpose already, so you would have to come back and basically reappropriate it for a different purpose if you wanted to use it for something else. Would also note, there were a couple of questions about the...
Do we have anticipation of any turn back at this point?
We would have to get you a report on that. We'd probably need to wait till year end and see what spending has looked like for current, but in the majority of what we have in the framework, I don't believe that we know what would, would be turned in, if any of them at this point.
Thank you.
The next thing I'd touch on, just at a high level, there are a couple of questions about the parking fund and whether or not it really acts as an enterprise fund. So there is a general fund subsidy, both in the budget book and in the notes there. You'll see that. We will have both DOT and the Finance Department come back sometime in the fall, potentially to Public Works, with an information item talking about why we have an enterprise fund for those operations and what the difference is in the accounting. It doesn't affect the budget at all, it's really more of an accounting feature. Going down through there, there were several questions about the transit authority. Councilmember Clark had some questions about ridership, and then the mayor Pro Tem had asked questions related to benchmarking. There is at some point a report coming back from HDR, who is a vendor, is looking at transit operations. So when they come back and look at specific recommendations for transit operations, we will also bring back some of the details on financing and the way that other cities in North Carolina do that. It's not as simple as just what is the property tax rate from one place to another. There are some other cities that have some other financing sources, so we'll bring that back when HDR comes with their recommendations as well. We'll note, there were several questions also about streetlights. How many do we have? How much energy do they use? What does it cost to replace them all with LEDs? We will also bring something back in the fall for that. We have north of 30,000 LEDs, currently 25% of them, or, excuse me, 30,000 total streetlights. 25% of those roughly are already LEDs. There's some very high-level math in there about what it would take upfront costs to move them all to LEDs and what we could save over time, but there is a lot of nuance once you get to the specific types of fixtures. So we will bring you something back in a couple of months that is a much more detailed report on the exact cost, both upfront and long-term savings with respect to transitioning streetlights to LED fixtures. Everything else on that list, I think, was just one council member asking, so I'm more than happy to entertain any additional questions relative to the response packet or anything else that may have come up since we've sent it.
Start with John on the end.
I have consistently asked every time it comes up with cameras about cameras out at Bathabra, and I see we're not out. And once again, in spite of graffiti out there and having the whole maintenance department raided and stolen equipment out there, we still do not have a program to put cameras at Bathabra. Can somebody tell me what the plan is on that?
City manager has directed Property and Facilities Management to work with Recreation to do an evaluation of the cost for that. So we're going to have to look at how many cameras are needed, what kind of infrastructure would be needed in order to get those cameras on our system, and we will have to bring something back to you on the exact cost.
Is there a problem with getting them out there as compared to our recreation centers and everywhere else? I mean, it's just, is there some special consideration that we're having a problem getting it, getting this done?
Mr. Garrity.
Good evening, Chairman Clark, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, Mayor Johns, members of the city council. Councilmember Larson, staff had, based on security issues and crime had prioritized, violent crime, had prioritized the rec centers first and some of the parks where we have the most population. But we understand your concern about the theft and the graffiti, and we're working on giving, coming back with a price for that, for those at Bathabra.
Okay, Ms. Cipio.
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Tesh, for this great response packet. It was quite thorough, lots of questions, and I enjoy reading through it to get all the answers to all the questions. Thank you for excellent job in doing that.
Would take a quick second to plug, there are several other people working in the Budget and Performance Management Department who put those together, and so I'd like to say thank you to the staff that's back there for that as well.
Well done.
Same here, thank you.
Just an editorial comment on the recycling. It seems like to me we're going backwards a little bit, particularly the amount that gets sent to the landfill. It went from 10% to 27, and then the chart shows the recycling percentage, and part of that's because we're getting more trash than, the denominator's growing quicker than the numerator. It's not necessarily just the numerator problem, but might be worth something for Public Works to look at at a future date, kind of what's going on in that area. With that, any other questions or comments on the stuff that was handed out? I will give my normal sermon on wisdom at the full council meeting, but please note, we're spending more money than ever before to move fewer people than ever before by the, roughly from 2012 to 2022, to over 10 years, the cost to ride somebody's gone up 400% for rider because nobody rides the buses. Anyway, and I know we got somebody looking at that. Anything else? Okay, Mr. Tesh, continue, please.
The next item on your agenda includes proposed staff changes to the fiscal year 2324 budget, and there are two of them. The first one is $20,000 for the Youth Advisory Council. If you will remember, during the current fiscal year, we have done two separate amendments for Youth Advisory Council, each for $20,000, one covered by the general fund and then the other covered by fundraising activities. So this permanently instates that $20,000 that was amended in this year's budget from general fund resources going forward in the operating budget. That would just be covered by a slight increase in sales tax. It's a minimal amount that would not affect our projection in any way, shape, form, or fashion. The other increase that you see there is $214,000 for the employees in the Transit Fund, TransDev employees. In this year's budget, there is a one-time supplement for all city full-time and permanent part-time employees. This would be allowing those bus drivers and other employees at TransDev to have access to a similar type of one-time supplement. I will say, in conversation with the city attorney, it has been deemed that we are not required by law to provide this to them. Looking at some of the language in, in the collective bargaining agreement for how they are supposed to be paid, this was looked at, and I think the intent was for them to be paid similar to our employees. They have been working hard in the same fashion, and so the management proposal is to give them access to the same type of one-time supplement. And it again would be tiered where those who are making the lower wages would receive a higher amount. That is $214,000 to be covered by the Transit Fund. Those are the only two staff changes that we have.
Mr. McIntosh.
Just in regards to this last item you presented, going back to Chair Clark's comments about the cost of ridership, in no way, shape, or form is that, is that represented by how hard these people are working on a, on a transit authority. It's not their fault that our numbers are where they are. They're working as hard as everybody else in the organization, so I fully support this.
I have got, excuse me, Mr....
Thank you, Scott, also. I agree with the synopsis that this was very helpful. On staff changes, I don't have any idea that I would win an argument today, but I will reiterate that going forward, we must have a communications expert working for the city. We, we prove time after time that we can't communicate well, and it has had some very negative repercussions recently. So there should be a director of PR or a director of communications in this budget that does not exist. So after we are under new management, I will continue to fight for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, well, thank you, and thank you, Scott, for these recommended changes. I know the chairman has got a number of changes he's going to bring forward there, but I wanted to make sure that we state very clearly that making sure all of our employees are taken care of vis-à-vis the salaries and benefits and so on is one of, I think, paramount importance to the mayor and city council. And I believe the recommended changes that you've made in the budget and just in those salaries goes a long way to address that. I do appreciate the chair's work, and he's going to present in addressing specifically some concerns that came to us from firefighters recently. And I believe that the changes that he's going to be suggesting will go a long way to address those concerns. I just want to say that I'm very supportive of that, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your work in that regard. We can deal with it, obviously, by taking a small portion from our debt service amount of the taxes to cover that, and I believe we'll do that. Got to make sure all of our employees are taken care of so we can make sure that we remain competitive and filling positions and that we're being equitable and treating employees fairly. And thank you for your efforts in that regard, and, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your efforts as well.
And let me say, on the transit, I think the issue is the bus routing. We need to optimize the routes. I think everybody, including the bus folks, work hard. I'm always very pleased with the performance I see of all our employees. With that, I have spoken with all members of this committee, as well as most of the other council members. I have a motion I'm going to make for the committee to adopt. It is a five-part motion, so please bear with me as I work my way through it. And what I have tried to do, and I think it's basically my job at the end of the day, is to come up with something that four and a half people will support, and I think what I've come up, four and a half, there's eight people, I got to get a half, will you? It's a joke, anyway. Not much of a one. But I think as far as the committee level, I think I've incorporated the changes people wanted, and we'll see what happens after that. With that, and again, five parts here. I moved that the staff changes totaling $239,000 be added to the proposed fiscal year 2324 budget as followed, $25,000 for Youth Advisory Council travel and the general fund covered by sales tax, and $214,000 in the Transit Fund covered by Transit Fund balance. Number two, I moved that proposed general fund budget be increased by $1,630,000 to increase firefighter pay minimums by $3,000 and provide 4% compression adjustments to certain certified fire staff. This would be covered by reallocating .6 cents of the property tax rate from the debt service fund to the general fund. Further, I move that the proposed general fund budget be increased by $87,500 for community agencies as discussed to be covered by reallocating .03 cents of the property tax rate from the debt service fund to the general fund. That $87,500 is made up of $25,000 to the Center for Creative Economy, $25,000 to the Mixer Maker Space, $35,000 to Action for Equity, and $2,500 to Smiley Sweets. Number four, I further move that proposed general fund balance be increased by $100,000 to provide a transfer to the Capital Fund project for the historical Bathabra Park project covered by general fund balance, and that the Capital Project's fund budget be likewise amended. And as an editorial comment, we want to see contractors, not consultants, out there. End of aside comment. Lastly, I move for approval of the fiscal year 202324 proposed budget, including the adjustments made by this committee, as previously just read, and setting a tax rate of 66.1 cents per 100 valuation.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Mr. Tesh, did I read all that correctly?
Chair, we probably need to separate those motions because some council members, committee members probably need to excuse themselves.
Okay, excuse me, then.
Yeah, so let's take each one.
Let's take, and I'll just go down the list. The first one is the one concerning the $239,000 for the Youth Advisory Council and for the Transit Fund. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Does anyone need to be removed on this one, or anyone wish to? Okay, all in, okay, I think we have to vote by voice, is that correct? Okay, we'll vote by, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? And I heard Ms. Adams say yes on that one. Second thing is the proposal for the firefighters, the $1.63 million, the $3,000 minimum and the 4% compression with the money coming from the property tax, from the debt service fund.
Second.
We have second of that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed likewise, that is approved. Next, a motion for the $87,500 for community agencies is listed Creative Economy, Mixer Space, Action for Equity, and Smiley Sweets. Is there a second?
Second.
Hold on, do we have any members on any of those boards?
Anybody on any of those boards? Ms. Adams, are you okay? Are you on any of those boards? She says no.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's a tough job.
I think Siri is thinking of that.
Few people can hear it, Ms. Adams is in a car, I just told her to turn right, but anyway.
She's not driving though.
Passenger seat.
She's passenger seat. Well, at least she's taking a right turn and not a left turn. I'm happy with that. Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed likewise. Next motion is a motion to increase by $100,000 the Capital Project fund for St. Bathabra to be taken out of the general fund balance. Is there a second? We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed likewise, that is approved.
Councilmember Clark, let me catch up for one second, make sure that we've got this correct. The, originally, the first motion, $214,000 plus 20 for Yak, not 25.
We'll take 25.
20,000 is what we intended at. If I wrote that wrong, and...
Whatever you said, 20,000.
All right.
Yeah, you obviously misunderstood.
We need to correct that.
Yes, let's make sure the record's correct. So what should it be, 20?
It should be 214,000 for transit and 20,000 in the general fund for the Youth Advisory Council.
Okay, Ms. Clark.
So what's the total?
234.
234.
Want to restate that, do it again for the record?
Your note. It's your note. I'm not taking a blame for that one. Okay.
If we're going to vote on that one again?
New motion.
We'll do, vote on that one again. 234. We'll do, vote on that one again. 234, 20, and 214. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? That is approved. And the, did we do the last one on the 66 cents?
No.
Okay, last one is include the budget with the adjustments just made. Set the tax rate at 66.1.
Hold on one second. Did we do the agencies yet? The ones that we were supposed to remove?
Yeah.
Okay. So the mixer and so forth, I wanted to make sure certain council members didn't vote.
Oh, the four committee members. Is anyone a member of any of those?
Would you read the names of the organizations?
Let me read the organizations. Center for Creative Economy, Mixer Maker Space, Action for Equity, and Smiley Sweets. I am not a member of any of those.
Okay.
Okay. And that was voted on. So what are we left with? Just the last item?
Yes.
And we have, already have a motion and a second on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? That is approved. This will all come back at the general council meeting on the 20th, which is a Tuesday, because Monday is Juneteenth. So if I get that. Okay, there's some other, other things we need to vote on if we'll continue with the agenda.
Sure, there are a couple of other items under four. These are the normal slate of things that come with the budget package that the Finance Committee looks at and then recommends for the meeting on the 20th to the full council. The first one is a resolution approving the capital plan for fiscal year 2324 through 2829 as a planning guide.
These are in your, on your screen. I see everyone looking at them. Can I get a motion to approve this, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve item 4A related to the capital budget plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? That is approved.
4B is a resolution amending Article II of the City of Winston-Salem's Personnel Resolution, adjusting positions, classifications, pay grades and pay plans, authorizing merit pay adjustments, and the one-time supplemental pay for city employees. I will note that before the 20th, this will be amended for the changes to the fire department that were made as part of the subsequent motion. So what you see on the 20th will be slightly different than what you have here. So we will make those changes before full council.
We'll make a motion to adopt this with the changes already specified, subject to. And this is 22 pages. We won't read the whole thing, but it is the details of how we implement these various things. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second on B, 4B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? That is approved. We will go to the last item, item C.
The last item is a resolution modifying the City of Winston-Salem's post-employment health care benefit program to provide the Medicare Advantage supplement to retired elected officials.
Are these numbers changing from previous year?
This is a new one. So this is, I would invite either Assistant City Manager Ral, who wrote this, or someone from our Finance Department to go through the intricate details
Yeah.
of this one specifically.
Because I think the 200s changed.
Good afternoon, Chairman Clark, Mayor Jones, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the City Council. This item proposes adding the Medicare supplement as a benefit for retired elected officials. So this is currently a benefit that's provided to employees post, the post-65 Medicare supplement. Right now, the cap of the city's contribution is $210.
$210, yes.
$210. The current cost is a little over $12. But this, this item would add this benefit to make it available to elected officials who serve at least two terms. It would be effective July 1st of 2023. So any sitting elected officials or future elected officials would be eligible under this, this resolution.
Any questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a second? All second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? That is approved. Thank you very much. I will, to remind everybody, the 20th, we will vote again. We would, I do not anticipate discussing the budget at the normal Finance Committee meeting, which will be Tuesday afternoon at 4:00. I want to remind everybody, there is a public hearing that the mayor will supervise at that council meeting before we vote on it. So there's always two public hearings, one at the committee level, one at the full level, for anyone out there that would like to comment at that time. Mr. Tesh, you have anything else to bring for us?
Do not, sir.
Okay. We will meet again at Tuesday at 4:00 to go over our normal activities. I want to thank everybody for working hard on this budget. Mr. Tesh, I thought y'all did a good job of talking to the council and the mayor ahead of time to get everybody's thoughts and feelings on it. I think with a roughly 4% tax increase, given the huge inflation environment we're in, everybody's cost of living's a little different because we all buy different things. But a lot of the things that we buy have gone up a lot more than that. And I think you gave the example of street repavings up 40% over the last two years. Those are just astronomical-type numbers. We've got to spend 40% more money to pay the same number of same feet of streets, for example. So I think we've, we've done a good job of being good stewards with the taxpayers' money. And, Ms. Driver, we look forward to our future tour of the lagoons. With that, seeing no other business, we will stand adjourned.
Thank you, Scott.